Welcome. Welcome back from the holiday. And the mayor is out of town this week and will be back next week. First order of business for the city council briefings, Minority Business Council annual report. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor and members of council and those watching in attendance. We're going to begin our briefing sequence today with the vice chair of our Minority Business Council, Amma Gourier, is here today. You recall in December she was unavailable to make that presentation and we rescheduled her after the holidays. So, Amma is here and she will be followed by Taylor Adams, our procurement officer for the city of Virginia Beach, who will provide some statistics of the annual report following the Minority Business Council's report. And then Taylor will lead us following your questions. Then we'll introduce Dr. Samir Bawa, who is our disparity study consultant, and he will introduce them. And we'll just kind of blend this whole conversation together and pick off your questions as required, if that's okay with the council.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you very much and Happy New Year to everybody. My name's Amma Gourier and I'm the vice chair of the Minority Business Council, as Dave Hansen just stated. Sheila sends her regards. She is our chair and she was not able to be here today to report this presentation to you today. These are our members. Sheila Johnson is our chair. Michael Lancaster is our secretarial officer. Kelvin Auther is our financial counselor. And then we have Carla Bailey, Hershawd Barrow, Linda Bright, Francina Harrison, Brian Haskin, Ed Hopper, Olga Torres, and Sabrina Wooton as our members. And our city council liaisons are Councilman Bob Dyer and Councilwoman Shannon Kane. We thank you for all of your support. And our school board liaison is Dr. Lakish Parrot. And we also have associates with the Minority Business Council and these are people who are kind of down in the trenches, helping us with our day-to-day activities and understand the work behind what it is that we do. And those associates are Rhonda Alexander, Colleen Monell, Frances Thompson, and Damon Watson. So, just a quick brief note about the Minority Business Council. It's an advisory agency to the city manager and city council about, excuse me, about cities' procurement policies and procedures for small, women, and service-disabled and minority-owned businesses. So, these are some of our initiatives for 2017. So, we're building relationships with other diverse organizations because when we say Minority Business Council, that really encompasses all the minorities, whether it's women, service-disabled, whether it's a racial minority. So, we want to make sure that everybody understands we are here for everyone. We have our expo and that's a great way for us to kind of get out the word about what it is that we do and how we hope to support everyone to be able to have a piece of this contracting opportunity here with the city. We have a partnership with the Hampton University Small Business Center to try to help create additional capacity with some construction and some other types of contracts. There's the removal of the pre-qualification from the bond waiver, which is a way to open up additional opportunities to some of our smaller businesses. Project information sessions. This is a way for some of the small businesses to really get an idea as to what is required about a certain type of project so that they really feel that they're empowered and potentially able to do the work, whereas maybe before, if there was that question in their head, they may not have moved forward with it. Sheltered bidding is something that's an initiative. We haven't moved forward with that yet, but it's something that's on the table. It's an idea. Process improvement committee. That's really a baby of our finance department and the city and Bob Dyer. So, if you have additional questions, I'll let him speak to that. And then, of course, there's policy review. So, those are some things that we look into to see where are some ways that we can create additional capacity. And the SWAM sourcing program, I'm not going to go over all of the items in the honeycomb, but I will tell you that blue are the programs that are spearheaded by finance, green are the programs that are spearheaded by economic development, and gold are some of the items that we're working on or some things that are out in the future to be planned. So, here are the numbers. This is what you really want to see, the fiscal year 17 expenditure summary report. So, if you look at what's highlighted in green, those are the total expenditures for minority businesses. And if you look at the percentage, it's 6.8 percent with a total expenditure of 20.4 million. And that's out of all available spend that's not encompassed by salaries and certain types of overhead. And so, that 6.8 percent is an increase over what we've seen last year and the year before. And the reason why that's highlighted in green is because we have a resolution with city council that our aspirational goal is to see 10 percent growth on minority spend. So, that's why we're highlighting that. But if you look at the bottom, for total minority businesses, women-owned businesses, and service-disabled veteran businesses, the percentage is 15.3 percent. So, that's also a marked increase. So, we're happy to see that these numbers are on the right trajectory and it's not Groundhog's Day when we're sitting in here and we're looking at the same numbers. So, move to the next one. And this is just the same information displayed in a different format, but this allows you to see where we stand today versus where we were in fiscal year 15 and 16. So, if you look at the blue line, that's the minority CIP expenditures. So, that's what we were really trying to drive, to show that the minorities in the community are really impacting other contracts other than some of the non-CIP expenditures that were primarily where the bulk of the numbers were. So, that's great to see that that trend is rising and it's risen from fiscal year 14, where it was at its historic low, to where it is today. And the total overall percentage is that gold line and that's also increasing in trajectory. Okay? And so, with this, the minority expenditures by category, in the event that you wanted to know, how does this minority number break down? The first column is African-American expenditures at 31.7 percent. There's zero total for American Indian expenditures. Asian-American expenditures are at 47 percent. And Hispanic-American expenditures are at 17.7 percent. And then, other at 3.7 percent. So, if you wanted to further break that out and look at what that equates to in millions or what that equates to in numbers of firms, that information is available for you in your packet and it's listed up there as well. So, for program growth, I'm going to let Taylor share that information with you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Counsel, Mr. Hansen. Just, and if I can, if you don't mind, I'm going to back up and hit one or two more things if I can.
Yes.
As Amma mentioned, the 20.4 million for minority expenditures is an all-time high for the city from a dollar value standpoint. You'll see across the bottom here, numbers starting at, you know, with 14.1 and working their way across. You'll remember last year, we were before you, the 17.4 million was the best performance in dollars that we had seen to date. We were delighted to grow with your help and the Minority Business Council's help to grow on that $17.4 million all-time high to 20.4 million for this last fiscal year. So, a really great year for our program. And again, we thank you for your ongoing support for the program there. Here, this is breaking into, before I start introducing Samir, we knew that we would have to get better at not just monitoring what we were doing from a spending standpoint, but understanding where we were performing and how we were performing. So, this is, you'll remember last year, we talked about becoming better at mining our own data. And so, this slide is our first pass at evidence of that. We think it's important to know. And in the actual, the full report that accompanied this presentation in your package, you probably noticed at the end, there were a list of all of the businesses that are included here. One of the things that we routinely hear is, well, you know, what's in your program? Is it all janitorial supplies? Is it all trade-based construction, that sort of thing? I'll show you in a moment that it's not. But what we wanted to demonstrate was that we had the ability within our finance system to extract this level of detail. So, when we see number of firms there, those are unique firms with whom we contracted during the last fiscal year. That's the cumulative sum that we spent with them there and millions on the side and just how that affects our program. And also, understanding that it's an initiative of our Minority Business Council to collaborate with all of the diverse organizations in our community. We wanted to be sure that we had the data to support them in that initiative as well. So, knowing how we're performing with Hispanic-Americans, Asian-Americans, we believe gives us better information and allows us to hopefully establish a more collaborative framework for the business council to sort of carry on with their endeavor. So, we're proud of what we're finding here. As you all remember, this is going to be new information that you've not seen before. This is a little bit of information that I've extracted directly from those pages listing the businesses. And so, and this is just to show you that we are being successful across the city's spend. And so, as it relates to technology, Software House International is a minority-owned software firm that we spent $2.1 million with last year. Achieve One, a fantastic contractor that has been supporting our IT group in the Next Generation Network Initiative to 1.2 million and Keeta Technologies for 204,000, coming down into construction. So, what I've wanted to focus on here were prime contract construction awards. So, you all will remember that for two years, I've been talking about the future growth of our program was in sort of cracking this construction nut that has been so challenging for us in the past. And the reality is, if you look at the way our spend breaks down, you can take up all the goods and services we buy in a year and it accounts for about 4 percent of our total city expenditures that are under sort of program review. So, I could do, in effect, what that tells me is I could do 100 percent goods and services participation with minority contractors and I still wouldn't achieve your 10 percent goal. For us to grow, it's got to happen in construction. So, we actively targeted that space and I am proud to tell you that we have had some success there. Are we finished? No, of course. This is work that we're never finished with, but these are important successes for our program. So, these are expenditures that we made. So, with DeAngelo Brothers, 1.8 million. I won't read all of these, but you can see, these are fairly sizable construction awards for us that we were able to make during the last fiscal year. Actually, excuse me, these are expenditures, construction expenditures. So, the award is made on these. These were construction expenditures that we made in the last fiscal year. And I'm proud to tell you that our success on the award front has continued there. That is, again, I won't regurgitate the entire report, but most exciting was two annual service agreements to minority-owned contractors for half a million dollars apiece. Those will have a three-year life, so we anticipate one and a half million dollars expenditure per contract on those over their life. So, we think this number continues to grow there. Also, just Peoples Pharmacy, a locally-owned minority pharmacy contractor has done some work for Human Services, again, on annual services contracting to the tune of $180,000 for the year. That is all that I had, but again, want to just end by thanking Amma and the Minority Business Council for their support, but also thanking all of you for your support as we, and also our council liaison specifically, for their support through the year as we continue to focus on this program.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, John?
Just observation on attachment A of the big report.
Yes, sir.
One of the things I thought was very interesting is that if you just forget the percentages of the total, but the growth and the change of the dollar values and what it is per year, it's 14.8 percent in one of the categories in terms of the overall non-CIP goods and services. But it was 7.8 percent on average of the overall expenditures was a per-year increase. Obviously, the base was growing, but that's pretty substantial when you think, that goes back to 2009. So, that's a pretty good trend line, if you want to think about it. It doesn't show up, but the absolute dollar value is what goes in the business's pocket, not the percentages. So, it's interesting to see how much that growth was.
Absolutely. Thank you. I mean, we feel like it's been a fantastic year. I will tell you, I was scared to death when I was standing in front of you last year at 17.4 million because I really did not, I hoped, but I really didn't know that we could grow on it. And so, you do see that our trend line has started to flatten and I think some of that is probably coming, is attributable to us sort of coming out of the recession and returning to what is more of a normal environment, which is sort of, you see the dip in our construction there. So, I don't know how much future growth is in there, but obviously, if those dollars are going up, it's helping folks here locally. So, we're excited about it.
Good job. Mr. Dyer?
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanted to thank publicly the members of the Minority Business Council, but also to the staff, Patty Phillips, Taylor, and the rest of the staff that works. It's a wonderful collaboration, you know, between a group of citizens that are working to really make a positive impact on the community, but also working in harmony with the city and doing some great stuff. And I think one thing we have to underline, how proactive they are at reaching out and doing things. I was talking, you know, we have a collaboration going on with Hampton University with Bill Thomas. And one of the things Mr. Thomas told me is that, you know, we're doing a good job in giving people the capacity to do the work. We have the Contractors Institute and we have different outreach programs where we're trying to, you know, educate people on how to go through the procurement process and, you know, maybe, you know, get a couple of small companies together that could actually do some, you know, marvelous things. But the point is, it is a very proactive effort of that's going on and I think it's really starting to bear some fruit. We've got a ways to go, but we're, I think we're trending in the right direction. But thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Ms. Kane?
I just wanted to kind of echo what Bobby is saying in that I want to publicly say we've got one of the greatest groups of volunteers sitting on the MBC that are working very hard every day to make sure that we bring this to fruition. And I want to thank Patty and Taylor and the staff for thinking outside of the box and coming up with some creative and different ways to increase those numbers and to increase our spend and make sure that we're diversifying and doing the same thing every day. You're going to get the same thing, but when you think outside of the box, the way Taylor and Patty and the team have led us to do, I think that's what's making us see these improvements. So, thank you for leading that effort.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for an excellent report. We appreciate everything that you folks are doing.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So, now if I can move into the introduction?
So, we would transition into the disparity study task order, one, feedback to the city council.
So, while Loretta is swapping us over here, as you all know, we are in the midst of the city's first disparity study. We, at your direction, we conducted an RFP this past spring. We made an award over the summer to BBC Research and Consulting out of Denver, Colorado. Samir Bawa, or I should say, Dr. Samir Bawa is one of the principals with that agency and is leading our disparity study. And so, we are delighted to have him today. I think the, one thing to mention before he comes up and sort of talks about the methodology, I am really excited that we're turning in our two most successful years sort of on record. Just to remind you quickly, the disparity study will look at not just those two years, but will look at a five-year window. And so, Samir will talk about a little broader period than the last two periods that we've talked about. But I do want to say how great his team has been to work with. They have been great at communicating their expectation of us. And this, another piece for us, we did not know exactly how good we would be at responding to the level of data that they needed. And I will tell you, we found there were places where we just didn't have it, but their experience and understanding of how to get that in other places that have had similar challenges has been a real help to us. They're doing a lot of work in our region, most notably finishing up in Charlotte right now and are conducting Asheville. And so, with that, I will, the last thing I will mention before I get out of the way is that he's a University of Virginia PhD, so we're glad to have him home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year and thanks for taking the time today and giving me an opportunity to discuss our disparity study in a little bit of detail. You know, as questions come up, I'd be happy to answer them as we go along or waiting till the end. I'll just defer to you in terms of how best to handle that, but I'm here to...
Let you finish.
Okay. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have today. To begin, I just wanted to quickly go over what the objectives are for the disparity study itself. At its essence, as is the case with any disparity study, we're trying to answer the question or assess whether minority and women-owned businesses face any barriers as part of the city of Virginia Beach's contracting. And the disparity study assesses that in a number of different ways. First, at its core, we look at whether minority and women-owned businesses are being underutilized relative to their availability for city contracting. That involves looking at not only the dollars that they actually received on city contracts, but how many dollars would you expect them to receive based on the types of work they do, their existence in the marketplace, and a variety of other factors. The study will also provide a comprehensive review of marketplace conditions for minorities, women, and minority and woman-owned businesses, and in particular, outcomes in key business areas, things like the access to human capital, access to financial capital, business ownership, as well as business success, to assess whether minorities and women are facing any barriers in those areas and whether those barriers are leading to impacts on their success trying to win contracts with the city. As part of the study, we'll also conduct a comprehensive review of the contracting policies and program measures the city currently has in place to encourage the participation of small businesses, which includes minority and women-owned businesses or many minority and women-owned businesses, as well as service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. And as part of that process, we'll also provide a number of thoughtful recommendations that will give the city food for thought in terms of refining the SWAM program and any other programs that it might want to implement in the future to further encourage participation of all small businesses trying to work with the city. In order to meet those objectives, the disparity study itself is made up of a large collection of both quantitative and qualitative research tasks. In the spirit of time, I'm going to focus in on what we consider the core quantitative tasks as part of the disparity study, which is the utilization analysis, the availability analysis, and what's called the disparity analysis. The objective of the utilization analysis is to calculate during our study period the dollars that actually went to minority and women-owned businesses on city contracts. That process starts with us gaining a deep understanding of the data that the city maintains on all of the contracts, all the relevant contracts it awarded during our study period. We've been working very closely with Taylor's office and others at the city who have been wonderful in their support of the process and helping us understand the information that we're looking at and getting us the information that we need. So, we're collecting information on all relevant industries in the city's contracting. So, that includes construction, professional services, goods, as well as general or non-professional services. We're looking at both prime contracts and subcontracts the city awarded during our study period. And that study period itself is for all the contracts the city awarded between July 1st, 2013, and June 30th, 2017. So, as Taylor mentioned, not just the data that he showed in the last fiscal year, but also going beyond that four more years so that we have a statistically valid population of contracts that we can examine. Once we've compiled and understood all those data, which we're in the midst of doing now, we'll go out into the field and conduct what we call utilization telephone surveys. So, for all the vendors that worked on the contracts that we're analyzing as part of the study, we are going to attempt to conduct surveys with them so that we can understand two key pieces of information. First, their primary lines of work so that we can accurately classify contracts based on vendor industry, and then, of course, the race, ethnicity, and gender of their owners. In addition to race, ethnicity, and gender, we also understand that disabled veteran-owned businesses is also part of the SWAM program and what the city's trying to do. We're also going to collect information about their status as a veteran-owned business. Once we've collected that information directly from those vendors, we will combine it with the information that we collect directly from the city and then we'll be in position with a high degree of accuracy to calculate the percentage of dollars and the sheer number of dollars that actually went to minority and women-owned businesses as well as disabled veteran-owned businesses during our study period. Now, of course, that number on its own is very useful. It's useful to know the percentage of dollars that are going to disadvantaged businesses, minority and women-owned businesses during any study period, but it becomes even more useful if it's coupled with an understanding of what you would expect those businesses to receive in terms of city dollars. And that's the primary objective of what we call the availability analysis, to estimate the percentage of dollars that minority and women-owned businesses and disabled veteran-owned businesses are ready, willing, and able to perform on city contracting. Just like the utilization analysis, that starts with city data. So, as we're understanding city data, we want to identify two key pieces of information. First, what is the city's relevant geographic market area? In other words, where are prime contractors and subcontractors coming from geographically to actually work on and compete for city contracts? Second, we want to understand what are the industries and sub-industries that are most relevant to the city's spend? So, what types of contracting are they actually engaging in? Where are they spending their money? Once we've identified those pieces of information, we develop what's called, or what we like to call, a phone book of all the businesses who are working in industries that are relevant to the city's spend and who have a location within the city's relevant geographic market area. We expect that that phone book will include anywhere between 5,000 and 10,000 businesses. We're actually in the process of making those determinations now. So, I don't have, I don't know how big that phone book is going to ultimately be, but given our experience in the cities we've worked with in the past, typically, it's in that range. Once we've established that phone book through a variety of sources, national business listings, local vendor registration lists, so forth and so on, we'll then attempt a telephone survey with each and every one of those firms. Those are called availability telephone surveys. And as part of those availability surveys, we'll collect a great deal of information about each firm who actually participates. So, we'll ask them about their primary lines of work. We'll ask them about the roles in which they work. Do they work as prime contractors, subcontractors, or both? We'll ask about the year in which they were established, their capacity to actually work on city contracts. So, what's the biggest contract they've ever bid on or been awarded in the past? We will ask them about their interest in actually doing public sector work specifically with the city of Virginia Beach. And then, of course, we'll also ask about their ownership status, the race, ethnicity, and gender of their owners, as well as whether they are veteran-owned. Once we've collected all of that information, we'll have created what we like to call an availability database. And in that database, we'll have information about all the firms that complete a survey with us, as well as information about their individual characteristics. And then, we go through a contract-by-contract matching process. So, for every prime contract and subcontract that the city awarded during the study period, we can understand from our database what firms are potentially available for each prime contract and subcontract and what percentage of them are minority and woman-owned. And then, we can aggregate all that information in a dollar-weighted way so that what we have is an estimate of the percentage of dollars that one would expect minority and women-owned businesses to receive. Once we've completed the utilization analysis and the availability analysis, we're then in position to conduct what's called the disparity analysis, which is essentially to assess whether there are any differences between actual participation and availability on different city contracts and different sets of city contracts. The calculation for that is relatively straightforward. So, for a set of contracts or for a particular group of businesses, we look at actual participation and we divide it by the estimate of availability from our availability analysis, and that results in what's called a disparity index. A disparity index of one indicates parity. In other words, utilization or participation is largely in line with availability. Anything less than one is considered a disparity. Anything less than one is considered a disparity. That means that minority and woman-owned businesses on that contract set were being underutilized relative to availability. And a disparity index of .8 or less is often considered by the courts who have looked at this as a substantial disparity. It is often used as an inference of discrimination against a particular group in a marketplace and can often serve as justification for taking relatively strong measures to help address those barriers. In terms of the timeline for the project, as well as the progress that we've made so far, so we kicked off the project in September with a number of in-person project initiation meetings. I got the chance, of course, to meet Taylor and the rest of his team in person, and we began immediately learning about the data systems that house the city's contracting and vendor data. Shortly after, we conducted stakeholder meetings. We conducted two public meetings here in Virginia Beach where we presented the project, as well as gave folks the opportunity to submit verbal or written testimony about their experiences working in the local marketplace. And we're going to take that information and compile it into a large appendix of what we call anecdotal information about barriers in the local marketplace, so that we can augment all of our quantitative information, all those cold, hard numbers, with individual experiences from businesses, trade association representatives that are operating right here in the region. Over the course of the next 10 months, and as I've mentioned, we've already begun this process, we'll be in the throes of continuing to collect data and analyze that data as part of the disparity study. So that includes the contracting and vendor data that we've collected from the city, as well as the surveys that I mentioned, and in addition, conducting things like in-depth interviews with business owners, where we get the chance to sit down with 40 business owners over the course of one to two hours and have in-depth conversations about their experiences working in the marketplace. We expect to have draft results and a draft report at the end of July of this year, and then we will submit that to the city for review. And then, based on any revisions and refinements, we'll submit a final report and have final presentations at the end of the summer of 2018. In terms of the progress we've made, as I mentioned, we've already participated in project initiation meetings. We've already reviewed the systems and requested contracting and vendor data from the city. They've actually delivered the majority of that information, and our team is now compiling that information, and we're actually ready to submit it back to the city to make sure that we have aggregated it accurately, that we're interpreting everything accurately, and will then be in position to collect some of our own information via those surveys. We've conducted the stakeholder meetings back in October, and we've also begun conducting some of those in-depth interview processes, in-depth interviews, excuse me. We're actually working with two local subconsultants to help us with that, the Miles Agency, as well as Kerwin Strategies, who's working as a sub to the Miles Agency. So they've begun conducting in-depth interviews with business owners here locally. And then, in terms of our progress in the next couple of months, we will work with the information that we've collected from the city to define the relevant geographic market area. We'll begin the process of conducting availability telephone surveys, which is the surveys that help us assess the degree at which minority and woman-owned businesses are ready, willing, and able to work on city contracts. We'll continue conducting in-depth interviews in the next several months. We will be collecting additional subcontracting data on contracts where the city has not maintained that information, so we'll collect that information directly from prime contractors. And we'll also continue developing the legal framework for the study, which helps to inform not only our methodology, but also the city's continued implementation of the SWAM program or any other new programs that it might implement moving forward. I want to thank you again for your time, as well as your attentiveness, and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions here? John?
I have three. On slide four, I'm familiar with disparity index relative to financial instruments, where you're measuring the difference of assets' value relative to its moving average. And your use of disparity in this instance, will you be doing moving monthly averages across that 12-month period, or is this just an aggregate of the calendar, the whole 12 months?
Yeah, so it'll actually be the aggregate over the entire five-year period, so the entire 60 months, broken down in a variety of ways. So we'll have disparity indices calculated separately, for example, prime contracts versus subcontracts, for construction contracts versus professional services, different time periods within that, but it won't be a moving average or a rolling average.
There's two other indexes that are often used in these studies. One is the denial disparity index, when you look at people who apply for or submit bids and they're disqualified.
Yep.
And the other one is the fallout disparity index, people who start the process of engaging, but for whatever reason, barrier or the nature of the interaction, drop out. Will we be capturing those two indexes in the course of this work?
Yeah, so the indexes won't quite look the same, but what we do do is look at the bid process for a sample of city contracts to understand, for example, is it the case that minority and woman-owned businesses are less likely to submit bids in general? When they submit bids, what's their success rate versus non-Hispanic white male-owned businesses? In addition, we'll also have a lot of indices around other aspects of business success. So we'll look at loan denial rates in the region, we'll look at insurance acceptance and denial rates, so forth and so on. So there's a broader context to some of the experiences of minority and woman-owned businesses and small businesses in general.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anybody else have questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, thanks very much.
Thank you.
As always, I appreciate it, Mr. Bein here.
Mr. Hanson, you want to-
Yes, sir. We're going to reset. Some folks are going to slide out, and Ron's going to set back up. And to preface, the conversation that we're going to have next is an entertainment district update. And inside the entertainment district update, we have many initiatives ongoing. And just to steal Ron's opening line, because I know what it is, it was a year ago this month that we started the conversation of briefing the city council on the concept of advancing the entertainment district and started a series of updates that we have kept you informed of our actions. And so we continue with that process today with this briefing.
Vice Mayor, Council, Happy New Year. Good evening. Yes, so as Manager alluded to, what we started talking about a year ago was that goal of being a year-round destination, and then following what the plan, the work plan that we established, building off of the resort strategic action plan, what new product is it that can help us to achieve that? So I have two updates and then two recommendations for next steps on two of the projects. Quick update on, these are the four updates, on the Vibe District, the CIP project, Dome Site, where we are with that, and then we'll have recommendations for next steps in Sports Center and peer development. On the Vibe District, as you recall, we have three infrastructure projects that have been planned. We have finalized the design for the 19th Street improvements and are advertising for the, this month. We project that we can get underway with construction in April, and that construction completion would be in May 2020. And again, that is from Cypress Avenue to Arctic Avenue, the improvements with the right-of-way of the sidewalks and the travel lanes there. On the Dome Site, as you recall, at the end of the year last year, we had selection of the preferred developer, and we are in an exclusive negotiating period. And as part of what we laid out in the process, following basically a similar PPA-like process for the schedule and what we did in, after selection and in a pre-development phase, a key component of that is that we do public engagement. Now, we started, when we started the process, we thought that we would have a complete blank slate, but the preferred developer gave us a vision for what type of development that we should do. We agreed with that vision, and so now we're starting the engagement with a tailored input for what could be incorporated in the project. And we're going to do this through three ways this month. One is through targeted stakeholder meetings, the hotel association, restaurant association, the civic leagues, so on and so forth, other business groups that are providing input. The second is, you may recall that Julie showed you a new tool that we have called publicinput.com, where it can provide online surveying. We will launch that in the next week with targeted input on several key components of the project, the site layout, the mix of uses, programming that could go in there, connectivity, public amenities that might be included in the project. And so we will ask questions to that regard, and it will then help, along with a public workshop, which will work through the same type of components of the project, laying it out for the, what's the concept that's there? What did we envision for how with the developer could be laid out and use the 10 acres? We will use that input to inform the design, to evolve the conceptual design, and then use that in the studies that we have agreed to cost-share in, to make sure that we can then build a pro forma for consideration for a term sheet later in the spring. So our next steps over the next quarter are, again, to accomplish the public engagement this month in January, and then to commence our feasibility studies parallel to that. The five studies that are being, that we are finalizing scope on are entertainment, retail, and overall economic impact analysis, parking feasibility, and cost construction verification. And the outputs, on the entertainment feasibility study, we want to make sure that what we believe there is the market and that we've been advised by those that are in the industry, that there is indeed a market, and the right size of the venue that we have been targeting will meet the demand that is out there and that offers a return on that. Retail feasibility is that the type of retail we've been looking at to validate that there is a market and that can be sustainable and successful, and that it's the right mix for where it's located. And then the overall economic impact, not only on the impact of the overall development, but also the context of the development as it rests in the oceanfront in relation to the neighborhood and the resort district east of Pacific Avenue. We will then take those uses and what the proposals are for the overall development and right-size the parking demand, and then ultimately take the pro forma with the projected development for cost construction and make sure that the costs that are estimated in it are right for the market that we're getting from the developer. So we expect those to start to wrap up in March, so that when we're in April, we're starting to get that real data that we need for the term sheet negotiation. Any questions on that?
Any question?
Nope. So when we left you at the end of last year, we were moving towards selection of the preferred development team for the Sports Center at the Convention Center, and as we mentioned that the, in January, we would come to the conclusion of recommending of that team. The PPA process allows us great flexibility in the type of procurement, because it does blend design-build with operations as well, and it looks at the different ways that you can do the design-build. After review, and it was a very, very competitive group of applicants that submitted for this, all good ideas, all capable, what we have, what we're recommending is that we take a dual path, with number one, selection of a design builder, with MEB being the preferred contractor that will have Clark-Nexon and Hanbury as part of their design team, and that we take a parallel path with Eastern Sports Management for the operator. We recommend that there's two interim agreements, the first of which we would recommend that be posted at the end of this week for public comment, and following the PPA process, that there would be a public hearing next week at your meeting on the draft interim agreement, and then per the PPA code, then 30 days later, you would consider it for adoption. We would then follow with an operator interim agreement, and the operator interim agreement basically needs to look at some of what we've discussed before, and that is, how is the relationship and the operation of that in risk and costs and revenue sharing and cost and/or investment in the facility? We have several considerations that we have to look at with an operator to work through, and so it's going to take another additional month in order to look at the two different paths that we could take in that. Now, the goals of the interim agreement on the design-build aspect are basically to finalize the site layout, where does it rest on the Convention Center campus? We can do some preliminary site work, some of that is analysis. There's different infrastructure that's underneath of those parking lots that we have to consider. We have had significant soils testing going on over the past couple of years, so we understand quite a bit about that. A requirement of PPA is that we do public engagement, and the interim agreement time period is the time that you do that as we're building the design. We would finalize the scope and amenities based, along with that operator input, and following VDOT and the state standards, design to 30% that they then could give us a GMP, which is the basis for negotiation of a comprehensive agreement. So the schedule for that would be that if in agreement and consensus here with you, Council, we are announcing our preferred developer, design-build team, and our preferred operator team. Next week, we would conduct the public hearing for the design-build interim agreement, which we can share with you this week. And then, that in February, you would be adopting the design-build interim agreement that would, the expiration date that we have a draft for that is that the work and the goals of that should be done by, in the fall, at the latest. Realistically, a lot of that could be done by this summer. And then that we finalize what we would have for the draft operator agreement later in February for consideration and adoption in March.
Mr. Moss has a question.
You said later in the week, the interim agreement would be available.
Yes, sir.
When you say that, when is that, later in the week? It's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday. We were finally finalizing a review realistically tomorrow. Mr. Attorney, I don't know if you have an impression on that, but I think-
So the public's going to have less than a week. So if we're just for show, public hearing, I guess the 16th works, but if we really want to know what people think, I don't think giving people five days, including a Sunday, is meaningful public review. Matter of fact, I haven't seen it.
Well, we did have it as part of our RFP for the project, basically 90% of what the document is, and we can share that now with you, Mr. Moss.
I think the public is the people that we're asking input from, not from me.
Sure.
I'm listening.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure the public has a right to look at it, and is it reasonable to think that a non-professional citizen who isn't sitting in this room, who has other commitments, in five or six days, if they decide to do that, do they have to devote their life to looking at it to come and give us meaningful comment? Would we want to be put that position ourselves? This comes across as for show. Maybe that's what it is.
Ms. Wilson?
I just want to comment that I think it's, the Field House is a good idea, that it's going to help with our year-round mission of the year-round-
Destination.
Destination, and to have, because I mean, I live at the oceanfront, and right now there's, the streets are pretty empty, and we want to make sure we have a lot more activity down there. But I do have concerns that we don't put it where we were going to put the arena, because I just hate to think that even though the arena's not going forward at this time, that we, we don't want to close the door, that in the future, we might want to have arena in the future. So I really don't want to put the Field House in the place where we were going to put the arena. So I just wanted to make my concerns known.
Understood. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Yes, John.
Two other comments. One, I think if we're going to go this route, we should go a fixed price, not design-build. The literature shows design-bill is more expensive than it is, costs more. Secondly, the aspect, which we still have a larger debate on, and I hope the public will speak to it, we are allocating our most critical asset on all these projects, which is debt, our available debt capacity. We were told last May, when I proposed, along with Councilman Abbott, to get up to $2,800 per capita to help us accelerate flood control, that that would endanger our flood, our bond rating, if we got within $200 of the per capita policy that we established. That happened right in this room. So now we've established that debt is our most critical limited asset in making public investments. We have $113 million requirement for flooding in this very same area, for flood control projects, so we're putting this stuff in before we finance the flood control. Interesting, but we have neighborhoods that are flooding and other things that need that debt, so I- So I think when you talk about and look at the analysis and the opportunity costs in the business case, you have to show the opportunity cost of those places that we can't help, those homes we can't dredge their canal, there are ditches and fix their homes from being a threat from water, that's a cost and it doesn't show up in that analysis. There's more to the beach than the fieldhouse. There's more to the beach than the dome site. There's more to the beach than a pier.
Anybody else?
No.
Yes, that's true.
Just, just a comment.
I was just, oh, Barbara, go right ahead.
No, go ahead.
These, these are really good sounding projects. I mean, and you know, I don't want to put a damper on the thought of any of them, but I still am concerned when we're looking at them individually. And I want to see them all together so that we are looking partly at, at what John is getting to, you know? You know, you can, you can, or you know it, you spent all your money and you haven't gotten half of the things done. I, I just still think as far as the, the overall question of, of debt and of parking and of what the whole area is going to look like, we really have to look at these together. And how are we going to do that? What's going, at what point are we going to start seeing all of these in one thing? Because, you know, we can't just do each one individually and not pay attention to the fact that the other one is also being considered.
So Ms. Henley, next week, we will present to you an update on the tip fund so that you can see the, the financing available from that dedication towards resort-enabling projects so that you can see what the capacity is to support all these various projects that we're presenting as part of the entertainment district. We're also in, in the throes of providing a series of parking analysis to which there will be various incremental parking briefings to you, one being on the convention center, which will be scheduled for you next week. They will in total create a package of parking requirements for the entire resort. We can't, the, the parking requirements for our resort can't be co-located in one centralized area. I think we all understand that we need to spread that across the whole spectrum of the resort so that folks that, tourists and visitors coming to the resort have the ability to park at this location both up and down the resort. And there will be a analysis that determines how many parking spaces in total we think we're generating by creating the entertainment district. But the location of that parking is really going to be spread out between such locations as we're speaking here. The convention center sports facility location, the dome site rebirth development, if we get to the pier project to support that new public amenity, the re, the redevelopment of our, of a public pier, a public park and the parking that goes along there. And so we are factoring in the evolution of the Uber world of travel that we're starting to see. And, and we're kind of lucky that we didn't go build a whole bunch of parking projects because I think you have a council member here that's watching all our conversations very closely at the resort and is, and he's expressed to you that he lays awake at night thinking about parking. That seems to be a personal thing, but at, at the end of the day, we're working that. And so we're going to begin to give you that conversation again next week. And so we are, we are teeing up these conversations for you and we are, that's why we're giving you this brief, not as a separate project, but as the entertainment district so that you all start to think of the whole ambiance of moving to a year-round destination. And that's, that's what this investment is all about, is trying to maximize a world-class resort that doesn't operate year-round. And so that's why you're getting them all in one set package and we're going to continue to build parking and build finance for you.
Just so we don't hit any of these decision points incrementally until we can keep all of that, I'm just going to remind you all on the, the big picture.
On Ms. Henley's question, all of that will be in hard copy to us.
Right. We'll, we'll, we'll provide the status of, of all these things. All briefings get to you the Friday before we ever present them. I know we had some difficulty with the snow event, but I think we got you links to online and we've delivered copies as best we could to get you all informed that these are the briefings that we're going to present to you. So, yeah.
We got, when we got the last briefing on the three proposals, are we going to get some sort of debrief on, you know, why the decision was made in terms of, you know, the group that we've selected or, or recommending? You know, we were talking about different sizes, we were talking about different concepts. You know, will we get some sort of debrief on?
So this, at, at this point, Counsel, one, it was the selection of the team, not necessarily the concept or the design.
Got it. So those are still?
That is the purpose of the interim agreement.
Okay.
Is to build on the ideas that we gathered during that time.
Okay.
And to get, and to get the best product that we can.
Got it.
Any more questions of Ron? You want to move on?
Yes, sir. Just want to make sure we're affirming that to, that the recommendation for selection and moving forward is, is the direction that we want to go.
I dissent. I'm sorry. Say that again.
That the recommendation for the selection of the design builder and advertising for the public hearing for the interim agreement for design-build, that we move forward with that.
Anybody object?
I do.
Anybody else?
I, I think John had a good point about the public hearing. I mean, I feel like there should be more time for a public hearing. I don't see why we couldn't push that back.
Anybody else?
Well, if, if we feel that we haven't fulfilled enough time, we could always reschedule another one, couldn't we?
Right.
And, and just one more comment, that the, the interim agreement does not commit you to the facility, to building it. It is committing to a, a preliminary design, public engagement, site analysis. It does commit funds to do that preliminary design, but it doesn't, it's not the final. The final say about the facility and to actually construct it comes with a comprehensive agreement.
Yes, John.
Barbara, what did you just say? I didn't catch that.
If, if we have this public hearing next week and it's pretty apparent that we really haven't gotten a good read on it, we could have another public hearing.
Meaning defer it to?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have to make a decision next week.
That is correct. And, and you also, just let's not lose sight of the fact that we have an approved CIP. We're following the, the process of getting through the PPA process. You have the ability to interject and will keep, be, be informed of all these agreements and, and that we will share these agreements publicly and that we will keep you informed at the 30% design so that you have an ability to, to make adjustments so that we can make sure that we are delivering a project that meets your expectations with the CIP that we presented to you and that we, that we orchestrated with the intent of expanding a year-round destination as part of the anchor to the west of the entertainment district.
Yes, John.
I just want to make one more. When the council majority did adopt the CIP, which included this project, this project did not include the parking garage, which was essential to making it work. So in fact, we had an un-executable CIP with regard to this project at the time of the adopting because there was no parking for the facility. So I think we just need to make certain that we didn't really make a decision about the dome site, meaning about the fieldhouse. And Mrs. Henley even made the comment during the deliberation that we shouldn't take that as a decision. So I don't think we should be making inferences that somehow by the CIP adoption that we made a commitment or provided direction because in fact, the discussion was quite to the contrary.
Yes, sir. And my inference was just so that you understood that our cost share participation in the 30% design is appropriated and wouldn't be coming back to you for additional funds. And I might comment that we always stated along that that parking garage would only be necessary if both the arena and the, and the sports facility arrived at the same time and we ate up enough surface space that we cannot do that. So we will present to you the parking analysis next week so that we can have a full-fledged conversation about support to the convention center, support to the parking, to the sports facility. And we're going to interject one more ingredient and that is of course, the Headquarters Hotel that will eventually show up to support our endeavors as part of our convention center. So we're going to incorporate that into our calculations.
Mr. Dyer.
And the other thing is I really hope we spend some special attention to the adjacent neighborhoods. There's no way, even though if you build parking facilities and everything else, there's going to be spillover parking into those neighborhoods, there's going to be increased traffic in the neighborhood and things of that nature that, you know, let's just make sure that they're part of the public discourse on this.
Absolutely. Unless I hear from anybody else, we're going to move forward on the 16th with the public hearing for the design-build interim agreement.
Okay.
All right.
The final project for consideration, discussion, recommendation this evening is, is about the pier. For a couple of years now, you've had discussions about the opportunity for a new pier. There have been discussions with the current franchise holder over the course of, I believe, nearly a decade about the opportunity or whether or not reinvestment and upgrading of the current pier could be done. We've been presented ideas about the redevelopment of the pier and we're recommending a path forward for how to accomplish that this evening. The recommendation this evening is that you can achieve that in, in a different format, but similar. Right now, you have a franchise license as, correct me, Mr. Attorney, but that's how the, the current pier has, how it franchise to a privately owned pier, a private operator. The recommendation is, is that we have an opportunity to construct a new pier that would be a public facility and open to the public and that a, a lease through perhaps the development authority is a way to do that, that can do a long-term lease that then would be a development authority, perhaps owned and, and subleased to leverage a mixed-use private, public-private development. The idea that it should attach to the boardwalk, that it should align with a corridor such as 15th Street, that it should have a public park that connects to public right-of-way all the way from the sidewalk on the east side of Atlantic Avenue out onto the, onto a pier. And that there should be public parking available onsite nearby is what we're moving, what we're recommending that we consider. The process to do that, I'm going to come back to the, the steps for that, but we have seen these images, we have looked at a vision that's been shared with you. What we're recommending is we start to move through the process of getting to a, a point where you could actually have opportunities to make a decision about a partnership in doing that. We've envisioned in, with, with property enters near and around 15th Street that you could have a public here, that you could add a, a second deck for fishing, that you could have entertainment and food and beverage, and that you could have redevelopment of hotels there and that you could have other retail across Atlantic Avenue supported by a parking structure in the area. That you could have a public park that aligns here with the pier that gives an opportunity for another gateway to the boardwalk and entertainment. And so the recommendation is that through a lease arrangement that we could achieve this and that first that we should open for public comment the idea of a pier development and the idea of creating a destination around that pier as well, that is more than just a pier, that entertainment and other uses, mixed uses could, could support that. We can advertise between now mid-January and early February in order that leases might be solicited for, for a bid for lease. And then by the end of February, you could have a structure for consideration of a lease agreement and potentially for a term sheet in order to achieve this vision. And so that's what we're recommending this evening is that this is a, a template for how to get to the vision for this redevelopment of the pier and the potential for uses around that to be redeveloped as well.
Any comment, Mr. Dyer?
I have several.
You know, I just guess on the surface, I just got two basic questions and I think I'm pretty consistent on my 13 years on council with public privates. Isn't this in fact, if we like kind of own a pier and then we have businesses on it that we're leasing, aren't we in fact competing against other existing businesses? And I got a problem with that. I don't think we should have city-sponsored competition, you know, for existing businesses. And the other thing in terms of, you know, building the pier and everything, has there been any discussion on putting it out for RFP to find out if there might be another independent developer looking to build this thing instead of the city?
There has been consideration and in this opportunity, someone could, could respond to the bid as well.
Yes, John.
Couple of questions. First of all, I think if we are thinking about building a pier, which I think is a low priority relative to other deeds in our community, but that's another discussion, why wouldn't we solicit bids and saying build a pier anywhere between Rudy Inlet and 31st or 40th Street and open up the whole spectrum of opportunities rather than a site that just happens to coincide with a proposal we received to build a timeshare in a hotel and having us wanting us to close 14th Street? So it looks to me like as much as it has the pretense on paper, because none of that's mentioned on this slide, any of that relationships and discussions we've been having, so transparency is totally absent, that this clearly looks like in the timeline. So first of all, we're asking the public to look at an interim agreement, I guess everybody has that to spend their weekend on, and to comment on the 16th and come in. And then we're saying, oh, but by the way, you know, take a little bit more time out of your real life that, you know, we have so little respect for the people we work for that we jam another item on their plate for their analytical, critical thinking skills that they got from our school system and have no early opportunity to apply in this case. There's no indication that we really care what they want or what they might say because we're not giving them any time to meaningfully think about it because I like to get meaningful feedback. And we're obviously not giving the full disclosure of the other pieces that go with this deal and the parties who want to have that lease and who had a time advantage to be prepping for the actual announcement, which we know to be true. So if we're really interested in that, we would open up the full spectrum, our hearing would be much later and we would have, and I said, you're correct, we'd be looking up for, once again, not using and incurring public debt for building this facility. So I think this timeline, independent of the merits of the argument, you know, looks like, okay, I'd like to hear from you, but if I don't, good, bad, or indifferent, we know where we're ending up at. This is just not the way we should treat the people we work for. This is, this is a disrespectful process. That's, that's all I can say.
Yes, Mr. Attorney.
I might want to just bring to the attention of the council that first paragraph that really addresses the, the criticality of why this process is taking place and the way that we are approaching it. We currently have a city pier. It is privately owned and privately run. It is in great disrepair and it is time to replace that. As a world-class resort, having a concrete pier that can weather category two hurricane storms and is able to provide a basic structure for the public's use that is aligned with a city street that receives dedicated property to create a public park that connects to our Atlantic Avenue, that will also provide the ability to build structured parking is critically important to enhancing a year-round destination. The ability to request the permitting from the federal government who has control over the ocean to redevelop a pier that's currently permitted, adjacent to a pier that's currently permitted, is also an ingredient in this conversation. And the selection of this location is because it is part of the central resort area that we are focusing the creation of an entertainment district so that we have the ability to expand to a year-round destination. The cost that we are talking about here, and if I can have the picture back up that shows the pier, we are talking about just a straight-line pier, not all the enhancements that go on top of that. That cost is about $18 million to That cost is about eighteen million dollars to create a public walkability all the way to the end portion, and then a pay-for-fishing on a sub-tier to the side, constructed of concrete piers. And that the private sector that would engage in a developer agreement with the Development Authority would promise to put forty-plus million dollars of construction to expand that pier's base, to create the double tier, to bring new-to-the-market entertainment, so that people who come to the beach have things to do year-round. Additionally, there would be the requirement to dedicate public property, public amenity, a public park for access, because what the council has to recall, Seventeenth Street Park is not owned by the city. As soon as the owner decides he will do away with the Dairy Queen and redevelopment, we lose a public amenity, which is another park on the oceanfront. This creates the ability to sustain a full-time, in perpetuity, public park to the ocean. And thirdly, the ability to build structured public parking, the ability to put three-hundred to three-hundred-and-fifty additional spaces at that location are critically important. So, the all-in investment that we think occurs with this proposal is twenty-five million dollars from the city, which buys you a public pier, and it buys you public parking, and creates a public park that accesses to the public beach and Atlantic Avenue. And that the private investment potentially could surpass two-hundred million. And in a ratio of one to eight, it is really hard not to realize what the economic value of such a proposal is. And by my presenting this to you in this form, sets the conditions for the public to come forth and say, "Would you want a project that provides you all those public amenities for a cost of twenty-five million dollars that is enhanced by all those things that this project brings, and to get your comment of whether or not you would like to see that amenity come to your resort?"
Yes, Joe.
Excellent, excellent storyline, but let's just think of another story. Interest rates have never been lower, there's never been more excess capital in the marketplace looking for returns, the new tax law with LLC allows a twenty percent pass-through of income, which is tremendous. So, if this pier, which the infrastructure of the pier which we build supports the stuff on top, and the infrastructure is the most expensive part, is the foundation, so let's just make that clear, and Town Center is a good example of that, that we never built anything on top of it, we built extra cost to build the infrastructure for it. So, if that's so profitable for that two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in today's marketplace, given the availability of money, the low cost of capital, total expensing of capital, which is allowed today, total expense in the year of execution of the investment under current tax law next year, I'd find it might not be stampeded if this thing was so wonderful, and could make itself work in a free market. So, clearly, there's something about the underlying public investment that has to make that happen. So, let's just put that into consideration, and the private market should build it, in my opinion. But let's think about the opportunity cost of that twenty-five million dollars. I don't want to look at someone's face and say, "You know, I couldn't eliminate that twenty-year backlog in drainage ditches because I built a pier." So, would you rather be fishing, or would you rather have that twenty-million-dollar backlog in ditches taken care of, and then come back and talk to me about a pier? I mean, these are choices that we're making, and I understand the bright shiny object, but would you go, like I said, if your roof was leaking, would you go build a pool in your backyard? I mean, it's just a question of priority. And as long as we're putting all these things to the front, and we're telling people to absorb their thirty-two-hundred-dollar-a-year flood insurance premium, or their two-thousand-dollar flood insurance premium, or their repetitive flooding potential threat to their home, because having a twenty-five-million-dollar pier and this investment was more valuable than there, and that's what people are saying, I mean, I acknowledge that people can come to that conclusion, I just don't.
Mr. Wood.
Thanks. Ron, just to be clear, can you go to the recommendation slide, the last slide there? So, what you're asking is for us to go ahead and authorize for the construction of the pier, you know, well, the lease, RFP or what have you, for the pier, not for all the, not for everything on top of it, correct? That's down the road, right, Dave?
What I interpret you're being asked to authorize is the solicitation of bids for a lease of the portion of the beach upon which the pier would be constructed. The Development Authority will be a bidder, and other entities could bid, but you've got a process before you do a lease in excess of five years, that you have to solicit and open bids. So, this recommendation is to authorize the solicitation of bids, and the bids would then be open on February sixth, and then on February twentieth, the council would consider whether to approve a lease to the VBDA, and at that point, in advance of that point, presumably, there would be a term sheet presented for you to consider, which would explain the terms of the overall development. But the first step is to comply with the requirements for the lease.
All right, and so then, Dave, what's a source of funding for the pier itself, excluding any parking, the eighteen million dollars?
You're going to see me present to you next Tuesday, the financials of the TIP Fund. And I've been asked by various council members to see if we can avoid debt, and I think we have sufficient cash reserves that by the time that that project, the main pier, and not all the extraneous stuff, we would pay our eighteen million dollars in cash to pay for the public.
It's not coming from other infrastructure work.
It's all tip money, it's not coming out of general fund.
All right, well, and I guess my point on this, Mr. Vice Mayor, and you and I have been working as liaisons on this, you know, the existing pier is sixty years old, sixty-plus years old, I'm not exactly sure. It's in bad shape, I know it lost a big chunk of it during Hurricane Gloria in nineteen-eight-five, and they never built that back, and it just continues to kind of erode. And even as old and dilapidated as it is, none of us can go on there without paying for it, without paying for the privilege of walking on the deck. Regardless of anything else here, building a nice concrete pier out there is a public amenity, and I've been steadfast repeatedly throughout this entire process, is that it needs to be free to the public. I understand that it would cost money for fishing, because there's a requirement that you have people there to monitor and that sort of thing, to make sure people don't get hurt, so you have to staff it, and liability issues and all that, but ultimately, you're going to, it would be an extension of the boardwalk. It's going to be a concrete extension, so that anyone sitting in this room, anybody watching, and anybody traveling from Ohio or wherever can walk right out and experience walking and standing over the ocean, which a lot of us don't get that opportunity to, a lot of people don't get the opportunity to. I don't think it's an extravagance for our city, I, with all due respect to Mr. Moss, I don't think of it as a bright shiny object, I think of it as a piece of infrastructure that the city has. Now, regardless of whether or not it's a priority is a different thing, but it's a piece of infrastructure that the city has, or that the city will acquire, because I don't know that a pier that kind of looks like it's going to fall into the ocean is the best image for the city. And I think a pier that meets all current codes, handicap accessibility, everything else, and structural stability, and by the way, you know, the taxpayers who pay for it can actually use it without paying for it, I think that's the thing. So, I think we need to certainly move forward with this, you know, I mean, the council has seen in closed session, a lot of the details on this, financial details, and I think everybody, you know, objectively would agree that financially, it's extraordinarily positive to the city, so I would say that we should certainly move forward.
Ben.
I'd just like to say, I agree with Councilman Woods' comments here, and, you know, one thing that, you know, I think that John either, you know, leaves out or doesn't understand is how important the tourism industry is to our city, how much revenue it creates for us. It's an industry that we have to continue to, to continue to try to reinvent. We're competing against defined destinations, those destinations are actively competing against us, and if we were to lose the tourism industry battle, you're talking about some real dire circumstances for the city. And I think that probably you either, you know, I think you understand that, and, you know, I do understand what you're saying, but I think the tourism industry is that important, and you looked at, you know, the Arena project, for instance, you and Councilman Dyer lauded that project, it's a perfect example of the way that private-public-private partnerships should be. That was a failure, it didn't work, and so, you know, this goes back to the philosophical debate of public-private partnerships ultimately, and the fact that you disagree with the benefit of what public-private partnerships have done successfully can provide for the city, which we have done very, we've done several very successful public-private partnerships, and it's just a philosophical difference that we're going to have to have, but to say that this isn't a worthy project is, in my opinion, a mistake.
Everybody's entitled to their opinion. I will go on to say, from a famous person capitalist, and I think that to say that the arena was a failure, I think is not understanding what failure means. Capitalism is-
Where is it?
If you'd just let me finish, if you'd just let me finish. If I could, Mr. Mayor, since I was directly challenged on the point, I feel like I'm owed a response, rebuttal this, is our job was, and my point was, to protect the public against any downside economic risk of performance of that facility, which we did do. The fact that it failed told you that in the marketplace, it couldn't make it. Those hotel deals, when they came and told us, they want this pier to make those hotels work. So, it isn't, we could build a pier anywhere, and I think we could move other places at the oceanfront, through our Corps of Engineers, especially in the current administration, build a pier, so I think that's a red herring, but it's to facilitate two private developments, a hotel and a timeshare. That's what this is principally about, because they said without it, they wouldn't build that. So, the pier is a dependent, not an independent variable, it's, because they're depending upon that. So, my point is-
An opportunity.
And guess what? Those hotels themselves are no different than Bruce Smith's hotel at Twenty-seventh Street, they're not a destination timeshare, they're not a destination hotel, so we are creating and putting an amenity at a location that gives those two places a competitive advantage for selling, because we're putting a public amenity at their location, not at someone else's, and predistanced. That is giving people a competitive advantage. The arena wasn't competing with anybody else's arena in Virginia Beach. I think there are material and substantive differences, there are philosophical differences, but this is not what is portrayed to be, and I do believe is a question of priorities, and I think protecting people's homes from flooding is a higher priority than building a pier.
All right, first, before we go on here, because I've got three or four other council members who want to speak, do we have a closed-session item that has to be discussed tonight?
No, we can defer that.
All right, Ms. Wilson, you had a question?
Yes, I have a question, I did want to say, we talked about the TIP Fund, the money's coming from the TIP Fund, which is tourism dollars goes into that, and that's to be used for this project, which is only to be used for tourism projects, but I did have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
As you know, I can see the pier from my back, well, from where I live every day, and it's pretty bad, but I also know that on Sunday and Wednesday nights in the summer, we have fireworks, this from a barge. With the new pier, will we be able to do the fireworks from the pier, or will they be from a barge as well? Will that, because I know when-
Potentially. It's something we would analyze, yes.
May be able to, because when the weather is bad, and the weather-
Right, we've discussed that.
It's really hard to, so it may be able to help with the fireworks.
Potentially, we're going to look at that.
All right, John, you had a comment?
Well, yeah, I kind of just wanted to talk really for the, you know, without the rest of the development, just the need for a pier. I mean, we're losing a pier over on the Bayside, and I know all of us at this table have heard from many folks in the community, they're lamenting the fact that that amenity is no longer going to be available to the local community. Certainly talked about the existing pier for well over a decade, this council has approved multiple extensions of the franchise with the hopes that it would be redeveloped. We've lost pieces of it, I mean, it's going away, I mean, it's a matter of time. So, you know, to have an opportunity for a legitimate extension of the boardwalk, and to have the tourism industry pay for that extension, I think is a real win. If we just decided to let that existing pier go away and not rebuild something, then the actual face of our resort area would look dramatically different, feel dramatically different. And, you know, I don't want to overplay it, but, I mean, we, you know, to have our disabled community to be actually able to be over the water and be part of the ocean that a lot of us enjoy on a regular basis is a really cool element, and we don't have it anywhere else in the resort that they enjoy. And so, for that to be available to all of the public, and including the disabled community, to be out there and be a part of all the active things that we do, means a lot of the world. So, you know, and we also have public parking, which we don't have there now in Barbara, I mean, a lot of things that we've talked about is, how do we add public parking to a resort? Let me tell you how we can't do it. The city can't go and acquire parcels of property to build public parking garages, I mean, not to any significant component. So, the only way that we are actually going to, long-term, solve the bigger parking issue in terms of throughout the resort, is to be able to partner with private-sector folks that are redeveloping, and add public parking to those private facilities. This happens to be an opportunity to do that, and we would be able to do that, so it was co-located with a public amenity that's free and open to the public. And so, you know, I think that we can't lose sight of the fact that this is an opportunity to create something that's much needed, and to be able to leverage that with additional private development that is going to pay large dividends in terms of-
Jessica, you had a comment?
Yeah, my comment was kind of just blanket across all of the projects. I know, at least in Kempsville, the question I always keep getting brought up is, what do any of these do for me? And the struggle I'm having is, are we building for tourists, who by nature come and go and may not come back, or are we building to make our city more livable for the people who live here and have invested in here, and will continue to invest in here? And outside of the Vibe District, I don't really see any of these projects improving livability in our community, and I'll, the reason I pull the Vibe project out of that is because I think that does have an amenity for the citizens. I don't always agree with its complete execution, but I believe that it enhances livability for the community. So, I mean, I just, I have concerns with the order in which we do things, I feel like if, with the pier, if the concern is, why is our public comment not ahead of an action from council? I guess that's kind of a rhetorical question, I would think that we would want public comment to say, "Do you want a pier?" I haven't heard anybody say they want a pier, I live in Kempsville, maybe that's why. So, for me, I feel like public comment would come first, then potentially executing some kind of lease agreement, and then more public comment, at least when we're talking about the pier, and, you know, it's not really a question, but just really where I'm feeling, and I don't know that any of these projects are really truly improving livability in the city.
All right, Ben.
I understand, you know, the question that you're asking is, you know, what does any of these projects do for citizens, not just in the Kempsville district, but in any other district? I don't live in the Beach District, but, you know, I think that you look at, you know, just in comparison, a city like Chesapeake, Virginia, very similar in demographics, very similar in median income, what's the differentiator? It's the tourism industry that we have. A new recreation center was just built in Kempsville, they don't have recreation centers in Chesapeake, and so, you look at the quality of life that we create in the city of Virginia Beach, and some of that is due in large part to the tourism industry that we have, and the thriving tourism industry that we have, it keeps taxes lower, we have the lowest tax rate in the region, and it's one of those things where I think that, you know, we are gearing this not only for locals that live here, but we want those tourist dollars. Tourists come here, they spend their money, they don't tax our schools, they don't tax our streets, so we-
So we want tourists to come to this area. That's the whole idea of tourism industry, and it's a good deal for the city.
All right, yes.
Yeah, I'll think, I do agree with Mr. Davenport. But I think in closing, to comment, you know, we're coming up on a retreat. And boy, the city has a long laundry list of needs. You know, we're looking at millions of dollars for a new municipal center. You know, the flood mitigation is going to be, it's not going to be a 10-year thing. It's going to be a lifelong thing going forward. And I just got to think that we got to, you know, put a sense of priorities. I think we need a strategy map on all the major projects that we got going in this city, including a new city hall and everything, and figure out how we're going to pay for all this stuff. And now granted, we're now going to have a tip fund. But once again, the public doesn't understand tip fund. They don't, may not be aware of some of the funding. But if we somehow creatively find money for these projects, you know, why or other areas of the budget not being addressed? You know, public safety pay. You know, we can go into a laundry list of things. Unfunded liability, school modernization. We have an aging city with aging infrastructure and aging people. I'm just saying, going forward to the retreat, I think we have to do a really better job on, you know, demonstrating priorities. And I agree with the public input. You know, we got to do it before, not during or after.
Shannon.
I don't disagree with many of the comments that are said here today. I just wanted to touch on Jessica real quick. I know as far as the Field House is concerned or the Center, the CBB's not using it for room nights. That operator is all about local events and local sports teams and the local community filling that and participating. I know we spend many a night at the, at the sports, or at the Field House at Landstown, which is always full. And this operator is all about the locals and the, and those from your district and my district coming down and participating in those kids' sports. So that, that aspect of it, I feel like, not the other projects I have, I'm not, no comments on. But for this particular one, I do know that that's what his angle is and his goal.
Can we go over the agenda, just so I make sure we, what we have, and then we'll come back to the short-term rentals?
Yes, sir. So I guess what we're asking here is, can we move forward with putting a solicitation out and going through, having that process while we conduct public input? While we, and then you can, we'll have the opportunity to see what the bid is and then be able to move forward with whether or not we can get to a development agreement associated with this project?
Is the action the city managers requested okay with the council? Shannon?
Sure.
John? Jim? Rosemary? Barbara? Bob?
The only concern I have, it seems like a very short window to allow people to respond for such a major project.
Well, that's, that's why we've given you a public briefing, so the public can have an opportunity to look at it.
Jessica.
I think there should be public comment before any council action.
Okay, well, move forward, okay? All right. I'm going to go over the agenda first before we go to the next item, if I may, just so we know where we stand. Under ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any comments on any of them?
I'm voting no on 4B, but I'm not pulling it for a separate vote. But I will make a public comment at the end of the consent agenda.
You want a separate vote, you say?
I do not, but I want to explain my no vote. And I want it recorded as such on item 4B. That's the City of Real Estate Assessment.
4B, did you say, John?
Yes, sir.
I would, I'm going to abstain from 4B. And I'd also like to have public comment.
What was the last comment?
I just wanted to explain why I'm abstaining.
Okay.
On 4B.
All right. And there will be, I'm going to ask the council to do an add-on to, under ordinances. It's an ordinance confirming the declaration of a local emergency due to the winter storm.
You all have it at your place.
Grayson. All right, Ms. Henley.
If we don't get a chance to do much discussion of the short-term rentals in here, then we may need to do some additional discussing there, since it's on the agenda.
We can do it at the end of the agenda, or whatever.
Well, I just hope we have enough time to talk today.
And under planning, the item, only one item, that's the ordinance to amend Section 111 and 218, the zoning ordinance.
Are we approving that or deferring that?
We're approving.
I'm voting no.
I'm voting yes.
All right. Anybody else comment on that? Then we'll, so you just want us to record your vote as no, Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I'll be fine. I don't need a big discussion. I'll explain why I'm voting no.
All right. Okay. Now we'll go back to item 2B, which is short-term rentals. Mr. Frankenfield.
All right, thank you very much. Did you want to make any comments, Dave?
No, please. Okay. What Barry's here to do is to give you an update, a short update, and talk about the extension for delivering a recommendation by the Planning Commission. And so with that, Barry, rock and roll.
All right, thank you very much. So we're here to talk to you about short-term rental, primarily the process. We have detail here for you, but we hope to not get into a tremendous amount of detail and just go through the process. I want to thank Bob Thornton for being here today, who will hopefully get a couple of minutes to make a few comments about Planning Commission's involvement and interest in here. And I want to thank Kevin Kemp and Kay Wilson, who have been immersed in this effort for the last two and a half years. We've modified this presentation slightly from what you received in your package to primarily address some details on the different alternatives. Just some background, historically, there's been four types of short-term rentals. A short-term rental is defined as 30 consecutive days or less. Those are hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, inns, country inns, and vacation rentals. So we primarily are going to address vacation rentals. And a very obvious comment is the advent of online services to rent residential properties in whole or part has been significant over the last few years. And that adds to the complexity of this effort. And that's why we're here to at least show you how we want to get through this today. A little background, how we got there. There's a lot of background, but a little background is that you tasked the Beaches and Waterways Commission into looking into this in spring 2016. They made some recommendations to you in August of 2016. They started with event homes. They ended up with short-term rentals. They involved both. Then we, shortly after that, was the Ad Hoc Committee, which was led by Jack Drescher. Also provided recommendations to you in November. Then you had the General Assembly, who basically passed legislation effective July 2017, which authorized localities for registration process, for taxing, and the authority to create regulations for short-term rentals. So that's exactly what this is about, creating the regulations. In November 21st, you were given a three-draft ordinances, which you referred to the Planning Commission for consideration with the requirement that that be completed within 40 days. Just to give you a little remembrance, reminder, there's three ordinances. Alternative 1 is, and this is extremely brief, is an rental overlay district. And outside the district, you would require a conditional use permit. Alternative 2 would be registration and payment. If you registered your property, you paid your transient occupancy tax prior to January 1st, 2017, that use would be permitted. If you did not, you would register after January 1st, 2017. You would be required to have a conditional use permit. Alternative 3 is basically, short-term rentals are accessory uses, and they are permitted in all residential districts. With conditions, all these have conditions. One minor thing that we just need to bring to your, not minor, a significant issue about clarification of the difference between home sharing and short-term rentals. Home sharing is when you rent, lease, provide a portion of your property, a room, something like that, in your property while you're living there. That's home sharing. All these ordinances permit home sharing by right, just to clarify that. And that's interestingly enough how the Airbnb started, where people were just staying in somebody's house. But it's kind of gotten a little bigger than that. So we're not going to go into this. I would be glad to go over this in detail with you at some other time. This shows you the details of the matrix that we have developed as a tool. We think it helps you understand the differences. And we have provided this on numerous occasions. And we use this with the Planning Commission to try to get through some of the choices. But we will go over this, and we'll provide this for you. We will go over it in detail at some point, if you would like to do that. So what happened, the Planning Commission, after you assigned them the ordinances to look at, we had two workshops. Planning Commission workshops are like your workshops. They are public. They're open to the public. They are advertised. So we had two, December 4th and December 12th. December 4th, we had 40, sorry, 50 public attendants approximately. We had eight Planning Commissioners. On December 12th, we had approximately 12 of the public attend and six Planning Commissioners. There was not an opportunity for comment. However, we did get some comment shortly after that on December 13th. Each workshop, we developed a briefing, and the public got to see that also. We also, through those workshops, we were asked a series of questions. And so we provided all the emails and letters to date. We provided occupancy estimates. We looked online and identified all these other properties and how they rent, how many they rent per room, those kind of things. We identified the fees for individuals, as well as real estate companies, so everybody would understand the different choices. We also outlined special event fees, process enforcement, because one item that is consistent with all three ordinances is that an event over 50, less than 100, less than three times, three times or less a year, requires a special event permit. And so that is, was significant, that the Planning Commission had to understand that. We also got a lot of comments on noise and things like that. And so we actually, the police and 311 Emergency Center helped us research, and we identified all nuisance, noise calls, as well as parking complaints calls in the last year. Finally, we provided detailed maps of what we call the STRs, the short-term rentals. And that is an example of the map. What's interesting about that map is under all that green, if we go into a lot of detail, there's many, many, many more possible. Can somebody, I'm just going to, Phil Callen asked if we could, I'll just give this to you. Phil Callen asked if we could hand out this detailed map, so that's there for you to look at. So we provided all this information, which provided more discussion. All right, so at the plan, the meeting, this-
Barry?
Yeah.
Are those all the ones that are currently registered with the city?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And you're going to get a map to show a lot more detail. We do not have a list. The Commissioner of Revenue would not give us a detailed list, but he would provide the maps. And those maps will show you that in detail. Also, so what's interesting about them is there's actually three different kinds of online services, and there's probably many more than that. Okay, go. Planning Commission, December 13th, informal session. We went through those handouts we talked about in detail. We had general discussion. I think Mr. Thornton will tell you, we had no consensus. And just to make it clear, we have no recommendation at this time. We had 37 speakers, which was more speakers than I had ever seen at one time. We do have the verbatim transcript, if you would like it. And we also have my cryptic notes, which is a little bit shorter. And I'll be glad to share any of those with you, if you would like them. But we haven't, I have the verbatims here, if you'd like a copy. Oversimplification is, the Planning Commission deferred action simply could not come to a recommendation at that meeting and requested additional time to go to their February 14th meeting to address this issue. Some very general comments, and these are very general. They are not based on scientific fact. But if you'd ask my general observation, most of the people either favored alternative 2 or 3. There were a few that, but that's just a simple observation. Most common concerns were the bedroom limitations of how many per bedroom, the one day, one contract in a seven-day period, the insurance requirement, how are we going to monitor the events, and then how we enforce and how we inspect these properties to make sure that they are operating correctly. Following that Planning Commission meeting and the deferral, you got a letter from the city manager telling you that the Planning Commission had requested deferral until February 14th. Then on December 29th, you received a letter from the mayor requesting a delay of this action and prepared a resolution to direct the Planning Commission to provide a recommendation on February 14th. And then today, on your agenda, is a resolution to defer action until after the February, until after the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to make a recommendation. So between now and February 14th, the Planning Commission will hold at least two public workshops. We haven't determined those dates. We are optimistic that we will have a recommendation February 14th. We will, this is a suggested schedule. You can obviously make changes to it after the 14th. We suggest that we come back to you the 20th with a briefing of what the recommendation was and how we got there. We schedule a public comment period on March 6th. And then we schedule a public hearing and a council vote on the 20th. And we'll have, but if you would like, Bob, if you would like to make some comments, I know you have some observations that are much different than staff, perhaps.
The night, hi, my name is Bob Thornton, and I'm serving as the current Chair of the Planning Commission. The night before we had our meeting, I was reading a book. And there was a piece of it that was a biography of Eisenhower. And one of his staff officers came up to him before the Normandy invasion and said, when are you going to share with us your plan? And he said, let me tell you something. He said, it's so complicated, I can't give you a simple answer. And I thought to myself, that's probably what we're going to find out tomorrow. When we had the meeting down here in December, we had 37 different opinions. This is a very complicated matter for the city. The neighborhoods don't agree. People within neighborhoods don't agree. And basically, we reached the point that we just needed to have some more time to process it. We don't know what it's going to look like when we give it back to you. But there are 10 other people and myself, plus Barry's staff, and we're going to work real hard in the next couple of months to come up with a solution, well, not a solution, but a recommendation, hopefully a simple recommendation to a very complex problem, as Eisenhower told his young staff officer. So thank you for giving us the time. And we're going to do our very best to give you our best work. Thank you. Any questions to me?
Mr. Wood, you had a question?
I have a question for Barry.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'll get to you.
So this is good information. I realize that the commissioner can't give us, you know, street-level detail on this. Is it possible to blow up the areas in the other districts?
Absolutely. We would be happy to do that for you.
Yeah, I tend to hear from, obviously, it's an issue primarily of the oceanfront, Sandbridge. But I'm hearing from people within my district, certainly Kempsville and others, that I'd like to see just what the true impact is in those areas.
Okay, the surprise of the Planning Commission was that it wasn't all at the oceanfront and Sandbridge.
Well, that's right. And but the, so when I look at this, the dots don't seem to correspond with some complaints I've heard from different neighborhoods. Like, I don't see any dots in some areas where people are complaining, so I just-
Okay, we can blow that up for you. Be glad to do it.
Be sure you include Bayside in that request.
All right, I got it, I got it.
Always include Bayside.
All right, I got it.
Has the 311 number been instituted yet for calling in?
Yes, yes.
So that's, that's, and so everyone knows to put that in their houses to call?
That is one of the recommendations, that that number and a process for calling in, as well as a registered, registered, registered agent for the property would be on record. We are not there yet, but that's our goal.
So when they register with the city, they're being told to put that 311 number in the house so that people know to-
I don't think, not, not right now.
How is that going to work with the number to call in?
When they call in, Ms. Wilson?
How will people know to call that number?
Well, that is the, that is the- Well, that is the, that is the public response mechanism to get attention to noise or fireworks, or people running around naked in the front yard. And the thing is, they, the 3-1-1 folks immediately go to a list that's provided from the commissioner who registered with a point of contact, and we call that individual, and they have that least control over who is renting their property, and we expect them to respond to do that. If they don't respond, then our police will respond, and we're, we're going to be far more intensive in issuing citations, because the General Assembly said, "I got to have three infractions in order to do anything about it." So we're going to get busy in figuring out how to enforce those things. We don't want to get there, and I'm very surprised how much more attention our real estate companies and renters and owners are being in attending to the actions of the renters.
Well, being a liaison to Beaches and Waterways, I went to, I can't say I went to every single meeting, but I went to the majority of the meetings, and the things that were complained about was noise, parking, trash, and the ability to complain. And so this, this 3-1-1 number will be huge in having the ability to complain and to, you know, hopefully do something about the other issues. So getting that number out will be really critical.
If I may, I would, I would ask Ms. Henley if she would like to have, in the formal session, the opportunity to make her comments known.
I would, and I would just like to say, you know, John stays away worrying about parking. For two and a half years, I've been waking up in the middle of the night worrying about short-term rentals. I think we are not giving this the attention it deserves. It's time for the city council to start discussing it and asking questions, and it's time for us to make sure that this is totally transparent, it is not a one neighborhood issue. If you look at these three alternatives that we now have before us as possibles, these ordinance changes, these things that are allowed are in every residential zoning category in the city, including agriculture, the B4s, and apartments. And it's extremely important that we get this right, and I just want to share with you some of the questions I've been sending to staff, some of the answers, or some of the direction that I think, you know, we really have to make sure we are being careful to consider, because this has the potential for an enormous amount of unintended consequences. And we need to do, make sure we get this right. And as I said, I think it has to be totally transparent, and I think we really need everybody's questions on the table as soon as possible, so that staff can formulate the answers to those questions, because I think whatever we do, we better know what we're, what we're doing. And I really think it begs for a lot of questions and a lot of discussion, and so yes, I'll be glad to share with you some of mine in the formal session.
Okay, we'll do that after we do the ordinances and so forth. Yes, John?
Now, I want to echo Barbara's concerns. I've been following both the LIA, San Francisco, and San Diego papers, and anybody who's been looking at San Diego, this has been a hot issue. I'm sure the, maybe the city manager's aware of it. They've had many heated council discussions, which I have watched on the web, and they have, and two months of discussions have not been able to come to a, get into the complexity of the problem, have not come to an answer. But one of the things that I did ask the city attorney about, which we'll have to look at, is the unintended consequences of the tax law provisions relative to LLCs, and how investments and buying homes clearly for the purposes of short-term rentals, because of the generous pass-through effect. And what's happened in Seattle and other places, they have greatly distorted, basically, the long-term rental market is being displaced by short-term rentals aggravating housing availability and affordable housing. So this is a much bigger dimension than what we here to fore have looked at, and if we could get a copy, I understand Lexington passed something for, also, I know it has ruffled the feathers of some of the General Assembly, so it may not survive. So I think it would be good to see what that is, so we kind of got an idea of what draws attention, so to speak, so as we're looking. But Barbara is right, this is not just a little tweak, and there's a lot of things out there that will be hard for us to anticipate, and we still won't get it absolutely right, but I couldn't agree with the chairman of the planning commission more about the intricacies of this, because I, people are concerned in their neighborhoods, I can tell you that.
All right, we got five minutes, Mr.
And Kevin Kemp's jumping up here, and Caroline, are you guys doing this? All right, let's do it. We got five minutes. We got five minutes to lay it out for the council.
We were doing that.
And believe it or not, please, bring it up. We thought we might start at 4:30. Thank God we picked four, and I apologize for, but the discussion's been, been pretty good. Kevin?
All right, let's, let's roll through this. There are two items tonight, January 9th, that are planning items you'll be considering. The first one is an ordinance to amend to define major retail venues. This was staff recommended support. Planning commission recommended a deferral. Just to give you an idea, this is what the definition of major retail venue is. It's not residential, 4 million square feet of all the lots included in it was the threshold, principal use indoor rec and retail. And that last one just distinguishes the criteria to which we would identify a major retail venue. And the other is what Barry mentioned to you, the resolution to allow planning commission 40 more days. This would give them till after their February meeting. On January 16th, just to note that the five short-term rentals, you will see ARFs for those. They've been advertised, so you will have to vote to indefinitely defer those. So that's just a reminder. There are five other items that you'll hear on January 16th. The first is an amendment to allow off-site parking facilities in the B2 district. Currently, they are permitted in the B3 and B4. We've been approached several times by people who are interested in having these facilities in B2. Currently, it's prohibited. Just to give you an idea, this is the requirements. It matches the current city code 2358, what's used, so everything is consistent with the requirements. And with that, Caroline's going to jump up real quick.
So there's four more items scheduled for January 16th. All of those are recommended for approval by both the staff and the planning commission. This item is a request for conditional use permit for in-home daycare for up to 12 children within a single-family dwelling within the Salem Woods neighborhood. Item number two is a request for a subdivision variance to subdivide a 33,000-square-foot parcel along Ferry Point Road, and this will be for three lots, two of which will meet all of the requirements set forth under the zoning ordinance in the R5R district. And that lot in the rear, which is Lot 4A-1, will have only 25 feet of lot width rather than the 50 feet required. So a subdivision variance request to lot width is requested for this item. Number four is a conditional use permit for motor vehicle rentals within the Pep Boys along Lynn Haven Parkway. So up to 10 vehicles at any time will be on that site, and they will be available to the general public, as well as to the Pep Boy customers. And the last item on the 16th is a modification to a proffer agreement that was originally approved in 1994, when city council rezoned this property from agriculture to the B1A district. And the applicant is simply modifying the proffer agreement related to signage, and that sign is shown on the top right, and it's designed to complement the existing sign on the property along George Mason Boulevard to the right. They have received a certificate of appropriateness from the historical review board, and that concludes the January 16th items.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.